I'd like to call this study session of the Parks Board and Recreation Department to open, and would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, roll call. Mike, if you would, please.
All right. Mike Moffett?
Here.
Cindy Seuss?
Here.
Dave Beeson?
Present.
And then Barb Tuzley is absent.
Hopefully she'll be here. Okay. The preface of our meeting tonight is to study a couple of different topics for tomorrow's actual board meeting, so this is just some banter session that we would like to have. We're going to start with the farmer's market. I'm going to read a little bit of an opening statement, and then I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca from our recs department to give us an opening. Here's what I've got. At the beginning of this season at the market, it became apparent that space for the vendors was becoming tight. In fact, that some new vendors were turned away because of this. The ladies that were in charge of this asked the board what could be done. What could be done about this? And it was, we began a search for more space. When the option of using Lake Central's front parking lot came up, the idea of regular bathrooms was an important factor. We knew some conflicts were anticipated, but the board saw this as a possible solution. It was proposed a mid-season trial for this season might solve our issues moving forward. This was approved by the board as an option to be evaluated at the end of the year to become a new venue. Tonight, we will hear any and all comments as it pertains to. The evaluation, the board will not answer any questions on the subject, but rather use this information to make a final decision at tomorrow's regular board meeting. Thank you for your understanding. And with that, I will open the floor to Rebecca, or Shelby, either one, or both.
For a package deal.
Package deal, okay. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, so I would like to first express my sincere appreciation to all the vendors. They are some of the most hardest-working people I've ever met. Our farmers are there as early as 5:00 in the morning, before Shelby and I sometimes are even there, and they stay power through the entire market. And then this goes in line with all the other vendors, you know, whatever they're selling, jewelry, flowers. They are very, very truly hard-working people. So, to kind of just dive right in, this is just an interpretation of what I've observed since the move. I've had mixed feedback from both community members and vendors. Some vendors are here today, I'll let them, you know, speak about their experience. As far as community members go, we did see a lot of new faces. People were excited. Some people mentioned they never even knew St. John had a farmer's market. They were local to the area which where we moved. I did see some old vendors, they were sad that they had to travel. Some of the old vendors, or not vendors, I'm sorry, community members. Some of the older, old community members had no problem with it. They love their vendors, they're loyal to them, and it was just like a regular Sunday, you know, for them. Music, I think, is a positive feature. No, the only drawback with that is we haven't quite got the sound under control. Where the electrical hookup is, it's in front of a few vendors that were already kind of like placed in their spots for the layout for the second half of the market, so they were having difficulties hearing their customers. However, the bands, whenever we asked them to turn it down, they had no issue with that. So, going forward, it's something that Shelby and I will address with the layout for next year if it is at Lake Central. The other, let me see. I have had some food vendors that wanted me to mention the curious grade or slope that the parking lot has on the west side, so we weren't sure how it was going to work out in the beginning. And the first few weeks, we didn't have any complaints from anyone, people were happy with where they were. But as the market went on, there was some issues with liquids kind of slanting and it being hard to, for them to do like their production when it comes to their food and drinks that they're serving. That is something else that Shelby and I, if we are at the Lake Central parking lot next year, will have a different layout completely. It's just something we didn't consider at the time. I do believe that is all I have on my end.
Shelby, you got anything to add?
Everyone loves the bathrooms, that's for sure.
I can imagine.
Yeah. Overall, I believe between both the vendors and the customers, they have, you know, mixed reviews. I mean, with anything, you're going to have both sides of a story, but it's each individual reasons to their, you know, cases. But like Rebecca said, that we'll be repositioning those vendors that are having trouble, like with the slope, with their liquids not draining well, or their hitches becoming unhitched because of the steep, it's slight, but it is. It makes a difference, so we'll have to reposition them and move some vendors around.
Yeah, do you guys have any questions for us, or anything you want us to address?
So, do you, Mike, you got anything to add?
What pitch are you talking about?
Say what?
Towards the sore.
The slope, I think.
Oh, it's the, the purple parking lot, it's the west end of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, going down by that little ring road thing, okay.
Yeah. And also, the north end of it, also by the soccer field fence leading up to the bathroom, there is, there is a slight issue with that as well.
Downgrade.
Yeah.
Or upgrade, however you look at it.
But do you think a repositioning could be done in such a way to appease everyone?
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
Got it.
Yeah, I think so.
An alternative would be to use any one of the three other that do not have a slope, but then the bathroom is a non-issue then, because then...
We won't have access to the bathrooms.
We won't have access to the bathroom.
Yeah, we would have...
And you see that as a, obviously as a positive?
Bathroom?
Yeah, the location closest to the bathroom.
For the most part, yes, so it's...
I get it.
Yeah, no one's mad at the indoor plumbing. I haven't heard any, I haven't had like any complaints about that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, the custodian there, she's great, she's amazing. She checks and makes sure everything is, is clean and refilled all the time. She's, she's great.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, no problem.
What I would ask, if, if there's a vendor or a community resident here that would like to come up and have a comment, if you're a vendor, just tell us who you are and by name and your vending company, and if you're a resident, just give us your address for the record, please. So, whoever would like to come up and make a comment, now is your, your opportunity to speak for the farmer's market.
You guys want to go there?
Yes, please.
Hi, thank you for hearing us. One, we are from Beam Me Up Roastery, I'm Noemi Elizalde, my husband Arnie Elizalde. Oh, you can't hear me? And, one, this is our first time being at a farmer's market. It was a great experience for us, we really did enjoy it. We've been going every single time, every rain, everything, cold weather, all that, we 've been there. And the difference between the two sides is, I think it's better more for the customers parking. There's more room for them to park, they know where to park. At the other place, well, they were parking by the funeral home and all over, so I thought that was an issue. And another thing was...
The more vendors that go there, the more people that come here, the more, we sell coffee.
Benefits everybody, correct?
More coffee, yeah.
Yeah.
Shelby did a fantastic job. We are on the slope where we set up at, but it doesn't affect us. So, we have no issue with it.
Yeah, we had a tent, so we just...
So, you would say it's a positive experience?
Oh, yes, very positive. And like I said, the parking and everything was fine, so no park, you know, the better for the customers, they come to us then.
This being our first market, it was, it was a good experience.
Thank you for your coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Joe Heemans from Heemans Nursery. I've been with the market since the beginning, when we started at... The moves are always traumatic for some, and some people liked it, there's always growing pains going through this. Me personally, it hurt me. I have a lot of regular customers, clientele that I built up, who come for plants every week, and I lost a lot of those. Probably, I was looking through all the numbers, I was probably around 15 to 17% down since the move. But I've moved at other markets many times when the villages have moved to a different location, and it's, you always lose clientele and then you have to build up a new clientele again. And I know that, I knew that when they said they were going to move, that that was going to happen, but it did, and it did happen. My old customers from the other market, I see not that many of them to this new market. The first couple of weeks I've seen them, and I haven't seen, especially the elderly people, the church, most of the church-going people don't come all the way over here, not knowing, not living here. There is a divide, you know, some people say they just don't go that far, you know. A lot of the, the people who lived in the subdivisions that were close to walkers and stuff like that, you know, we don't see those people. I think there's one customer who loads her dogs up and comes here, but I've seen her a couple of times, but not every week. It's true, we have a lot new faces, so that means there's a lot new potential customers, and that's a good thing. It's a good thing for me and for a lot of other of the vendors who just have things that, you know, people buy one time, you know, they go through and they see, ah, yeah, I could use this, but they're not going to have four of those, you know. But plants is a different thing, you know. My thing is I try to get customers who like my product, and they buy a couple of things, and next thing you know, they're coming back, and then they're doing the front of the house, the back of the house, so multiple plant sales. The location where I'm at is, is very good, because I'm close to the parking. The parking's a lot easier. At the community hospital, I was, health center, whatever, I was way at the other end, so everything had to be wagged out to the people. So, it's a lot more convenient for me here.
So, in your opinion, all things being equal, where would you prefer?
The new place.
The new place.
The new place, because it's more clientele, more parking, hopefully, we might get some of the traffic that go to the events from the school, like we did. But a lot of those people aren't going to buy plants, they're not coming to buy plants, you know, they might buy a coffee or this or that. But overall, I think it's going to be a better move, it's just that I know I'm going to be taking it on the chin for, until I build up my clientele again. The girls have been working really hard at all of this, and I think all of the vendors worked really, really helpful for them, not giving them a lot of hard time, you know, which some of us could probably be pretty grumpy and do that, you know, complain about not, you know, change is not easy, but I think overall, it's probably a good move, you know. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Asherina Oz with Willet Waffle. So, I'm one of the food vendors. I will start my statement with, overall, I think it was a phenomenal move. I think there is an immense amount of benefits at the new location, I would highly recommend staying there. But I am going to mirror what he just said, I did see a decrease in sales, there is going to be, you know, some time to kind of build back up, and I think overall, really just increasing marketing, a better structuring of people where they are in the location, that's going to make a huge impact. The only other thing that I want to mention is I am directly impacted by the slope. It is pretty miserable trying to make waffles when the batter's flowing. I, when we did have to move one week to a different parking lot, it was awesome, because everything was flat. So, if there's anything that can be done to address that, that'd be huge, but otherwise, overall, it's a great move.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Kiara, I'm with Bon appetit, they sell natural dog treats. This is my first year doing the farmer's markets, and I was at the old location, and then moved over to Lake Central. The bathrooms is a great, I mean, I think that's great, but now commenting to what they said, I, it's hard for me to say, you know, the people that I've missed, you know, moving from one to the other, because it was my first year, but I have had people approach me, and older, and it seems to be the older people that liked the old place better. I think it is beneficial being at this parking lot, so hopefully, the people on the, it seems the people that live in that area are upset, you know, about the move, and the ones, those are the ones I've talked to. But, I, I do like the location. Now with the slope, I, I'm not totally handicapped, but I had surgery, and my balance is not great, so the slope does affect me a little bit, so, you know, hopefully I could find a flatter spot. But the bathrooms are great, the parking is better, you know, I did see a little bit of, you know, decrease, but like I said, it's my first year, so it's hard for me to say, but I do think that the location is better, and hopefully those people, you know, will come back, and, you know. Shelby and Rebecca, they, they're great, they've helped me out moving different places to help me find a better spot, so hopefully we'll figure that part out. So, they're doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Jo Skarupa, I'm one of the vendors at the market. I've been doing the market probably about seven years, doing a couple other different things, but now I'm mostly doing crafts. And I feel it was hard for us to move mid-season, to just drop our customers that were used to coming to us for seven years, and then have to go to a whole new location. I think a lot of them didn't know we moved, even though we're telling them and we're showing it on Facebook, and we're telling them, we're going to move, we're going to move. I think a lot of people, when they saw that empty parking lot over there, thought that the market had ended, and I feel like towards the end of the season, our vendors have really, our customers have really dropped off and not been coming. If you, if you, any of you came to the market, you would see how empty it was, even for our vendors, there was a lot of vendors that weren't coming, and it was very open. And I know we've had some bad weather, and when we have bad weather, nobody wants to come out to the market. And I know the farmers are diehards, and they come all the time, and they're there, even if you want to come get some produce, when it's raining, you can, which is great. I just felt like it was hard for us to move mid-season, and there should have been a bigger sign maybe at the other space saying, with an arrow maybe pointing, we're at Lake Central, we didn't end, like, because the whole end of the market seemed like nobody is coming, and it's hard to not have customers and be, you know, we spent a lot of time, we were there at 6:00 in the morning, 5:30 in the morning, setting our stuff up, it takes us a good, takes me about a good two hours to get completely set up. So, it's a lot of effort to unload your vehicle, get it all set up, and then not have any customers there. And I just feel like there's been a big downshift in customers coming out, and then sometimes one will show up and they'll be like, I didn't even know you were here, like, when did the market move? Like, there seems to be like not enough communication with the public, like, I don't know how we can make that better, you know, so more people know we're over there and not at the St. John Market. And maybe in the spring, if you decide to keep it over here at Lake Central, maybe put up a big sign, we're still having the market, but it's at the Lake Central parking lot, because people are used to coming to that spot, even the older people and, you know, customers that have been coming there for year after year after year. And move is always hard, and I feel like we're starting from a new market, as of July or August 1st. This is a new market, and that's how we're looking at it, like, our customers are all new, they don't know, they don't even know there was one over there in St. John, these are all new people. And if there was some way to merge all those people to know what's going on, would be great, but as for this year, I feel like my sales are probably down about 25% also. I like that there's a bathroom there, that's nice, and I'm just letting you know that it's, this is a brand-new market for us, I feel like it. And maybe down the road, two or three years, it's going to be an awesome market, but it's just the change of having to start all over again. And maybe, I don't know, maybe something could be given to us as an incentive to come back next year, like, hey, the vendors that have been doing this for so many amount of years, get an amount off of their startup for next year, to encourage us to want to come back and start a new market with you guys. I think the location is okay, it's a little hot in the summertime, because we're out in the middle of that big parking lot, whereas the one over there, there was more trees around the side, and it had kind of more of like a hometown atmosphere at the other parking lot. I know that the parking, wasn't a lot of parking there, but I never had a customer complain like, oh my God, I had to walk so far to get here. They didn't complain to me about that, so I don't know. It seemed like everyone had room to park, but I'm just saying, I would like to be at the other place, but I'm sure we could build this market into a good market, it's just going to take a couple of years. It's not going to happen, like, it didn't happen in that three months that we had being there. Okay?
Thank you very much.
My name's Doug Guchar, I'm with Crumbles a Bake Shop. I'm not a St. John resident, I live in Crown Point, but I can tell you, I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the market here. This is my first year being a part of this, and I got in mid-season, right at the beginning of July. I will say that these ladies are very accommodating, whether it's on the weekly basis, social media, or just helpful hints about how to set things up, what to do, what to expect, they've been very accommodating. I will also say that a lot of what I would tell you has already been said. The bathrooms are excellent, it's, it's really a great feature. I'm set up on the slope, I do not prep or prepare anything on-site, I'm all off-site, so that doesn't affect me too greatly, but I am also directly in front of the entertainment. That does have an impact. If we could do something to control the volume a little bit, that would help, but I can say in a very positive way, it creates an energy in the crowd, myself, and just people as a, as a whole. So, I'd say it's a good thing. I don't have anything truly negative to say about the location. As we were getting ready to move, and again, I started mid-season, so I was really new to this, there was a lot of talk and discussion and concern from vendors and from the attendees about coming here. I consider myself an outsider, I said I live in Crown Point, it, it seems that there's some imaginary line at 93rd Avenue. I don't know what that is, but it, it seems that that's the case. But a lot of the people said, I don't go past there, or I don't want to, you know, this and that, just little peccadilloes, that's all. Being at the other location, there's obviously a ton of traffic at that intersection from Strax, Target, et cetera, that floods that area, or used to do that. Some of those people, I, I don't know which direction they're really going to get home, but maybe it's inconvenient for them to come this direction, and that could be part of the dynamic of the, the new crowd that, that has been mentioned here tonight. So, I, I'm positive that there will be some rebuilding, and it will come with a little bit of time, and I can also echo what's been said about the immediate impact on sales, even the little bit of time that I've been involved, my numbers look like they're about 20% lower, just in the last couple of months, but again, I have a very small sample compared to some of these other people that have been here for many years. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Andy Voskus, and I will have to toot my own horn, say I'm uniquely qualified to speak tonight for a couple of reasons. Number one, I've been doing this for 30 years. Number two, in those 30 years, I've been market manager at several different markets, as well as a vendor, so I've seen a lot of changes. Comes brings to mind the Valparaiso market. I started out there 30 years ago, and we went from around the courthouse to the interim of a gravel lot that eventually became the stage where Valpar, if you've ever been up there, their beautiful little stage they got. And from there, we went from that lot to the grass here, which is now the skating rink, and that's finally where it ended up. It took three years, and even during that period of time that I was there, from the very first day to this year, it's my last year, I retired from the farmer's market effective this year, it was my last market, so I did something I promised Shelby and Rebecca that I would do. I talked to 20 customers and said, what do you think about this market? Because we know what we think about it, but what do you think about it? So, I took down 20 people's answers. Number one, oh, it's a pretty good market. We had to follow you, took us a little bit to find you, but we found you. 20 out of 20. Five people didn't like it because it was a little different location, and it took them a little harder, but change is different. Some of them didn't like it because it was further from their church, and they didn't want to make the extra trip, they didn't want them to do the different way to go around. My sales were off 25%, that's not why I retired, I'm just old, I'm tired. But the main reason that I got people, that I found out, is that a lot of them said, why are the vendors so angry? And to my fellow vendors, and not a lot of you are here tonight, let me tell you this, and most of you spoke positively, if you can relay this to the rest of our fellow vendors, please, guys, you talk about, bad about the market, you're shooting yourself in the foot, okay? Because if you don't like it, why should they come? Common sense, I would like to think so, I've been doing this long enough. It takes on the average, three years to take a market, even in a well-established one, Valpar, like I said, it's been doing it for a long time. I think when I first started this, Mickey Holuska was three, or something like that. But anyway, I've been doing this quite a while, and it's going to take three years, guys, that's all there is to it. If you can get with the people on board, which is Shelby and Rebecca, who have done a fantastic job, I've seen a lot of market managers, including myself, I told Shelby she was number two, as far as market managers go, she wanted to know if I was number one, I just smiled. But she would make sure that the vendors would have water, ice pops, and sometimes, this came out of her pocket, and vendors did not know that, okay? I know this because we had talked before, because at one time Shelby worked for me, and I told her some of these experiences that I had as a market manager, and I think that maybe helped a little bit, I don't know, what do you think, kiddo? You can tell me later. But anyway, back to the market. The market has a lot of positive things going for it, we are going to have some people, vendors, who are going to be unhappy, you are going to have some customers who are going to be unhappy, but you got to take with what you've got, which is the school, because my last day there, they had a soccer event? Flag football? And our numbers jumped up dramatically. Well, of course, everybody was saying bye to me, too, a lot of the regulars came out, but it jumped up from faces I never saw. So, about business generation from businesses across the street, from where we were, McDonald's and everybody else doing shopping, use the school and all their events as a business generator, because if you don't believe me, most of the people that I had buying were kids. I put out a bunch of small decorative pumpkins that said, free, for looking. Mom and dad all stopped and bought something. So, it's your marketing that's going to define how your sales go, it's your attitude, your presentation in a positive manner that will make this market a good one, or if it's negative, a bad one. Vendors, it's up to us, as well as the city, or rather, the town, to do what is in our best interest and theirs to do this market justice. Give us three years, all of us, have patience, it will work out. For those of you who are new, like I said, I've been doing this a long time, and I guarantee you, you stick with the program, this will be one of the best markets in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I add something? Absolutely.
Andy's, Andy's kind of right, he is right about, it just takes a while for the markets to reestablish themselves and get going. The only thing that I want to differ with him a little bit is that with the school events, it's, it's good for some vendors, because the more traffic, they're going to maybe sell more coffee, or more knickknacks, or he's selling pumpkins at that time, but on the day... But on the days of the school, and so there was a lot of, tons of people there, I sold the least amount of plants. Cuz most of those people weren't coming to buy plants, and weren't planning to buy plants, and weren't thinking about buying plants, you know? For me, I need people who wanna, you know, plan on buying something, then going to plant it. The worst day that I had at the market was the day that we moved for that cross-country event. Uh, I was, my sales were down seventy-three percent, I sold hardly anything that day. When we moved to the other parking lot over there, uh, it was really bad. So if we're gonna stay at that spot, you know, we should try to stay at that spot, not move around in those three parking lots. So at least the clientele that we're actually gonna be building up, right? They're not gonna be disappointed, they're not gonna drive by that corner, or drive the street and say, hey, they're not there. You know, and they don't realize that we're down on the other side of the hill from the school, you know? So if we stay there, we should stay in that spot as much as we can, you know, if the school will allow us to do that. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, um, we appreciate all your comments, we will uh, talk about this tomorrow at the board meeting, and we will make a decision as where we're headed uh, moving forward. That will be at the pleasure of the board. And we'll, you know, you can watch us, you can come back tomorrow if you'd like, you can watch us online, whatever the case may be. We're on YouTube, so if there's anything that you want to address, after that, you can take it up with Rebecca and Shelby. Now, we, we, we appreciate their efforts, too, and, you know, we're, we're happy to have them, and we're just happy that you guys came out and gave us your feedback, cuz without that, we really don't know. I was there a few times, I was at both sides, I was at the one originally about a community, and I also went to one at Lake Central. I just wandered around and basically just kinda paid attention to what I saw, and I could see benefits of both. Okay? I just, we were, our biggest concern was space, so that's kinda how we were thinking about it originally, so. But thank you very much. You guys got any thing you might wanna add? Okay. All right, we're gonna move on. Item B, and if you guys don't have to stay, I mean, by all means, you can, you can, you can go, you don't have to listen to the rest of this. Thank you. Item, uh, B, the, the youth ball field lease agreements. Okay, once again, I'm gonna preface this with a statement.
Can you wait one minute for them to clear out?
Sure. Okay. Here's what I got for the baseball softball lease agreement. At our last board meeting in September, the board was informed that the leases that we had with baseball and softball were not properly approved when they were issued. The board's legal department was tasked with the issue when it was asked to review them. Based on a partnership that St. John Boys Baseball made with the travel program, the Indiana Bolts. The board asked for this review to make sure that a non-for-profit organization, namely St. John Baseball, could sublease to an outside-the-town organization, even if it also was a non-for-profit organization. The board's legal representative found that while the town council approved the leases, then the then-current Parks Board did not in a public board meeting, and based on Indiana state law, that they were not legal and/or binding. While maybe tech, a technicality, it's the board's job to follow a proper legal channel and be transparent with the town. It is also, we also have a duty to the town to make sure that any and all things we've put the town in its residence first. It is for this reason, we are here today to hear any and all comments. It is the board's position that these leases are void, and new leases need to be drafted. We will hear any comments as it pertains to this matter. No comments from the board or action on this matter will take place today. The board will take all this information and discuss it as part of our regular board meeting tomorrow. Because there are two separate leases, we will hear each one of these comments separate, so that there is no confusing them. Thank you for your patience, as we hope to resolve this matter as soon as possible to everyone's satisfaction. So that's my comment, to open it up, and I will start with girls softball. So if there's anyone here that would like to comment on girls softball, please step up, give me your name, and your address, and let's go.
My name is Ryan Hallett, 11920 Lewis Court, St. John, Indiana. Um, before I start on that, just a, a note, I was, I go to the Farmers Market as well, awesome job, love going with my kids. I didn't know it moved either, I did see a lot of people over at, at the high school, and I'm like, oh, maybe they started another one. My question to the gentleman who left was, I don't know if you guys have signs there that says we have moved, but I think if, if I was gonna go there with my family and I saw a big sign that we've moved, I'd be like, oh, okay, get back in my car and drive down the street, maybe you can net more people. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Just, just, just a thought. Yeah, maybe, yeah. Um, uh, so yeah, I represent the St. John Girls Softball League, thanks for stating that, yeah, we, we have two completely separate organizations, we're a non-for-profit organization as well. Just a quick background, I, I got involved in this about five years ago, my daughter was in A U, and I was helping kids warm up, and, and, you know, just kept volunteering time, and then, you know, became president over time. So it's been a blessing, it's been, it's, it's been a great program, it's been along, around a lot longer than I have. John and Oscar have been two individuals that have been around much longer than me, and, and the work, the groundwork they've put into it, um, it's a great program. We've had, probably the past couple of years, we've had the most attendance we've ever had, um, in inception. Three and four hundred girls, spring and fall, um, great feedback from the parents, you guys have been wonderful to deal with Mike, Dave, you know, right when you guys got involved, you reached out, how can we partner together, you guys have helped a lot with the fences, and electrical, and just, you know, we weren't feeling any of that love before, um, this is all kinda bootstrapped, um, based on the parents and, and us as individuals. Parents contribute some, but us as individuals, these guys probably more so than me, but, you know, got a lot of time and invested capital in, in these fields over the years, because we don't really get any subsidy from anybody, and nor have we been asking, because, you know, we kinda just, you know, run our show, and everything's been copasthetic, and, uh, no issues. But that being said, it was brought to our attention that there may be an issue with the existing lease, and Nicole, I'd ask, you know, you know, you, you take a closer look at section twenty-four, it, to us, it kinda contradicts itself a little bit, regarding the Department of Parks and Recreation, and then, you know, the duly-appointed Board of Parks and Recreation, it's followed by the Town Council of the Town of St. John, Lake County. We thought that kinda contradicted itself, um. Uh, but anyways, we enjoy this agreement the way it sits. I'm kinda familiar with what's going on with the Boys Baseball, we don't sublease um, our fields at all, if anything, we, we rent them every once in a while, the, the, the cool thing is, the past two years, we've been so busy, we've turned pretty much anyone down from renting them, it's a nominal fee, it's like a hundred bucks for an hour. Um, sometimes we'll make a deal if it's, they need a couple of fields, but we've probably rented it out, maybe, I don't know, two, three times in the past year. Um, so it's, you know, there's no type of a sublease, it's a small nominal fee, just to cover the cost of, you know, we gotta get the grass cut, and, you know, get new dirt, and all that type of stuff. So, we would prefer to keep the agreement the way it sits, we're very happy with it, we've been very happy with the town involvement, you know, specifically, the, the Park Board over the past, you know, year or so. And, uh, it's our understanding that we, you know, we would like to keep it the exact same. If you feel we need to amend it or restart it, we're, we're opening to do so, but we wouldn't be really looking to change much of the content that's, that's in the current agreement. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Oscar Martinez, I live at ninety-two sixteen Lee Place. Uh, when I first came to St. John, when we first moved out here, you know, my wife said, she found a spot somewhere south of thirty, I'm like, wait a minute, south of thirty? That was deep south for me, and, uh, she says, listen, it's a great community. And, uh, what she looked at, that a lot of people look at, is three things, public safety. Uh, we look at, at the school system, and the other thing, we look at parks, recreational. And, uh, so when we moved out here, I've been here for, um, over twenty years, and, um, I remember our girls started growing up, and, uh, I was so busy with work, and not spending enough time with, with the kids, and, uh, my, my wife said, we're gonna sign up our girls for T-ball, softball. I'm like, okay, I'll help out when I can, and she says, no, um, they sent out a letter saying that the board is gonna shut down because there's not enough volunteers. You need a volunteer step up and be a board member. I'm like, that's crazy, I work narcotics, there's no time, she says, you're gonna make time. All right, well, though, I joined the board in two thousand and two, and, uh, worked my way up as a T-ball commissioner, uh, to, uh, A U commissioner, ten U, twelve U, all the way to the adult league. And, uh, I was blessed to be the president of the league for, I'll say, maybe thirteen years, and, uh, pretty much still, still around helping out at, at the league. I remember when we first started, it was at East Park, and that's where Clark Middle School was at, and, uh, we only had two fields there. And they were building the, uh, the middle school there, so we moved over to Heartland Park. And, uh, pretty much, it was a basic field, uh, the boys, you know, I have a son that played in the boys' baseball, but theirs was immaculate. Ours was, you know, we had porta-potties, we had a little water spout there to, to drink. And so we put a lot of time, a lot of effort in these, uh, in these fields that myself, as a president, and the vice president, we took out alone, with help of the, of the town, and, uh, to build a concession stand with running water, bathrooms, big concession stand. Uh, we put in the sprinkler system, we invested a lot of money into those fields. And all we wanted was to, 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 to get a lease for the four fields, the concession stand, the things that we invested a lot of money in, that the parents invested a lot of money in. And when I appeared before the town council, uh, we pled our case with, uh, with a lot of parents and children here, and, uh, we were blessed to get that approved, and it passed. So we went back as a board and said, it worked out, we, we got a call to sign the lease, I saw that the Park Board, uh, signed it. So we, myself and as a league, we were under the assumption that it went before a public meeting in, in the Park Board. Obviously, I saw the, the, the YouTube video, no minutes can be found, nothing shows that there was a public meeting. I get it, things happen. Uh, I think here as a league, we're just looking to say, listen, we wanna move forward, let's get it right. Uh, what we are is a nonprofit organization that provides recreational softball sports for children of St. John. I would say probably ninety-eight percent of the kids that are in our league are from St. John. Others do come from other towns. Uh, I would say that we're one of the best softball leagues in Lake County, if not Northwest Indiana. Uh, we're very proud of that, other, uh, communities don't even have a softball league. So, uh, we're proud of our league, uh, we put a lot of investment in it, and we work together with the town. This is what the town, the Park Board, this is what we want for our children. We're a growing community, constantly, even when I first moved in here, it, it didn't stop, it's, it's like out of control. You know, it's like, there's not enough space, there's not enough roadways, we need more public safety, we need a lot more. And, and we're growing as a league as well, and we need more fields. We've managed with the four that we have, we have a T-ball field, and then a, a fall ball field there, uh, that we share with the boys. But we are town ball, for little Suzie, for mom and dad that want their daughter that's not a travel ball player, that, like my daughters play from T-ball all the way to high school, all the way to the adult league. They never played in high school, they're very competitive, never were, uh, were involved in travel ball. Because that was the pace they wanted. If they want travel ball, we're, we're, we're like a, a, a stepping stone for that. For these girls to start off in T-ball, A U, maybe even ten U, and if your girl is ready to move on to something higher, we encourage that. We're so proud when we see some, uh, Lake Central, or other schools, or colleges, uh, that, that advance to the state championship, and we see that some of these girls play the St. John Girls Softball. I have girls right now that have, that I coached when they were in T-ball, in A U, that now have children that have their daughters in T-ball. I mean, that's crazy, the, time goes by so quick. Uh, I, I think the intention of the Park Board and the town is wanna get it right. Uh, since two thousand and twelve that we put all this, uh, then, since we got the lease, we put a lot more investment in it. I know there's been talk, maybe shorten the lease, you know, what else can be done. Uh, I, I think we're happy with the lease, of course, legal, we'll have to look at everything that is done right, I encourage that, that's, we, we don't wanna be here again. And, uh, uh, we just hope for the support of the Park Board and, and the town to continue to support an organization that provides for our, our girls here in St. John, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing, um, about liability you talked about, we are also insured. So I can have John, he's our treasurer, speak about that, but anything, uh, uh, and then, uh, we get injuries all the time, broken ankle, a parent get hit by a ball, uh, they never want to file the claim to the town, because we are self-insured, we, we take out a, a, a policy, and, uh, any injuries or anything like that is taken care of, so if you wanna hear anything about that, uh, our treasurer's here.
Thanks.
Unfortunately, had, my five-year-old got injured last week, and my five-year-old unfortunately got injured last week, and, uh, we, we did a, a whole stint over in the ER, and, uh, six stitches in the lip. It was, it was pretty tragic, but he's okay, but, uh, I just, you're talking about liability, it just happened less than a week ago, so, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Well, gentlemen, we appreciate your time, um, like I said, we are going to have legal look everything over, and, uh, come up with a, a draft that we will present, and, uh, make sure that we have all our i's dotted and our t's crossed, so that there's no, we're not back here again at some point in time, because, uh, that's what, uh, we feel has to be done in order to do this right, and have no claim against you, us, or, or the town. That's really why we're here, okay? Uh, I realize it wasn't because of you that we're here, but you're kinda caught up in it, because your lease and boy's lease is pretty close, as far as how it works. So you guys were first, and that, I think they pretty much cut and pasted your lease agreement, and went on from there, so. That's where we're at, but I appreciate it. Yeah, I don't know if there's anyone here from Boys Baseball Tonight, doesn't appear that there is. So we will close that segment, and move on to the next one, thank you, guys, you can, uh,
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. All right. This is more for the board. But, uh, we'll have a little inkling from, uh, Patrick and from Rebecca, but I, too, have a statement as it evolves around the Christmas in the park. As it was with Freedom Fest, the Parks and Recreation Department has been asked by the Town Council to take on the Christmas in the Park event. This event was started several years ago by the clerk treasurer and her staff, and has been a staple for the festival and the year of our town was showcased. The Parks and Recreation Department will do their best to put on this event, and continue to make the town proud. We have made several theme-based celebrations, because the event lasts for four to five weeks, starting on Black Friday, which is the twenty-fourth of November, and lasting through Christmas. We look forward to being a part of what has become a great year-end event. All right, with that, I will, uh, ask either Patrick or Rebecca, whoever wants to speak, and Mike may have a comment or two on that, so.
Yeah. Start. Um, so yeah, yeah, um, we, for a little while here, we have been going back and forth with some different ideas, um, for Christmas in the park. We have been, uh, we have six different events going on, like, as you mentioned, from Black Friday all the way to, uh, December twenty-first, which are all gonna be really nice, and really good, and, and a lot of fun for all the, for all the kids, families. We, in front of you, we have, um, a few different estimates about, uh, Christmas in the park, and about, uh, lighting. One idea, the main idea, um, and we, we've also said, we, we've reached out to a few different companies, and we've talked, uh, many, uh, a few times to a few different companies. The quotes that you have in front of you, um, are all from the same company who, um, who had given us prices. However, Pat did, did give you guys something here at the end, just for some general, uh, purchasing and stuff. So, well, as we were going through this process, we were looking what we could do to try to, you know, continue what was done in, in the past, um, while also trying to, you know, uh, make improvements moving forward, and not just for next year, but for, you know, ten years down the road. One of the main ideas here for this topic was to talk about, um, RGB lighting, which, uh, RGB lighting is, um, uh, programmable lighting. Funny word and stuff like that, but lights that could be programmed. And it'd be permanent lighting, and, and these quotes here, that you have, the, um, the, that, that very first quote is, uh, listing, um, permanent RGB lighting, um, that would be, um, on the pavilion, uh, on the bathrooms, um, on, on twenty-seven trees, and then there's a, one, there's a twenty-foot tree in here as well. Um, the plus side with some of these lightings, this RGB permanent lighting is The plus side with some of these lightings, this RGB permanent lighting is that, as a town, you know, obviously we set everything up and we take everything down, and we do that over and over again. But this permanent lighting will allow for us, for this to be up all year round, less work as far as staff-wise, be able to concentrate more on our main responsibilities, main jobs and stuff like that. And that goes for parks, and that goes for Public Works, Town Hall, you know, goes for everyone, you know, as a whole. Pat's been talking a lot, and he's been coming up with a, you know, game plan and stuff with Rebecca, too. We'd be going back and forth with everything. So the packages here overall, I said, there's four of them here. There is a gold, silver, bronze, and then a platinum. The platinum was the larger package. And then the one we sent today, based on some feedback as we were going back and forth, was more of a Platinum II-type project, which was, took out some items that we could, you know, do on our own, but basically left a lot of the permanent lighting that we would leave on through the park. Another key point of this, too, with the permanent lighting, and I think it's a main point. I know Pat will mention this too and stuff, but this is stuff we plan on to use all year round, you know, for Easter, for Halloween, you know, Breast Cancer Month, Child Autism Awareness Month. So this is just not a one-and-done type thing. This is something that we have planned, you know, going on for the entire year, which I think is a good thing, and it's a good thing for us as a town as we, you know, as we move forward. Still using items that we've had in the past as best we can to welcome the St. John sign, like we had mentioned and stuff. But this, I believe, would get us into, and when I say us, I mean the town of St. John. This will get us in the right, I would say, the right direction to move forward in the right way, if that makes sense. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, just to echo what Mike was saying, I think this is, you know, obviously keeping to the tradition of what we've done in the past and making sure that we're utilizing the pieces that we have had in the past. Your, obviously, your Santa's workshops, pieces, and other nods to what the Clerk Treasurer's office has built here in St. John. But obviously, with Mike was saying, moving Christmas into sort of the future for the next, at least five years, for sure. And truly not just piecemealing it together for the next five years and buying bits and pieces and seeing what does and doesn't work. This is truly a way to not do that anymore. And to what Mike was saying, with this new technology in the lighting, we can use it for different events. We can use it for, we can start bringing more events over to that park specifically. So I, I'm here for, I've been, like Mike said, I've been doing a lot of talking. We've been doing a lot of talking and research with this. So if there are further questions while looking at this, one of the things that he did mention to you, I put in front of you, is I got a quote from a company today just what it would be for us to purchase all of these items that Nate has put forth for us. And I mean, Nate is doing a very good job for us. He is, he is. The quote is very similar to what he is doing with insulation and labor and all that, so.
And that's just for the hardware.
And that's just for the hardware, yeah.
So the two that I wanted to basically, take a look at, basically, there's, this should have been basically the first two quotes in your packet. One is labeled Platinum, and it was dated 10 October 2nd. Another one was dated 10/23. We got it at 2 o'clock today. That's why I forwarded it out to everyone. But that is more like the Platinum Type II option, stuff like that.
Platinum Plus, that is what they call it.
Yeah, and that one basically is just pure permanent RGB lighting. There's some other, and the cost to install the RGB lighting. We did, you know, to install some of this permanent lighting, too. I know there's, I mean, there's certifications with everything, too, and stuff like that. But, you know, it was suggested to us to, you know, have it installed professionally for that factor, for the certification. So, you know, this is, most of this, most of this is supplied or warranted for five years, basically. Now, it will, it should, will, you know, go longer than the five years. But the warranty for all of these items here and that, the one dated 10/23 would be, you know, five years. This would be, again, permanent lighting for the pavilion, for the restroom building. Now, we did, there was Santa's workshop stuff on here as well. There was one here that was for, you know, $6,006. And then there was another one for $3,000 for some labor. Now, we, that actually, we would probably take out. Stuff that, you know, we can do, that was just, we can do internally for that. We were including that just to kind of see what overall number would be and stuff. Again, that would be going toward the stuff that we have now, and that, which does work and stuff that, you know, we can do. So would even, you know, lower a little bit more and stuff. But like the, you know, the permanent RGB lighting in the pavilion, the restroom, as I mentioned, transformer and power supply, which we would need. We've also talked to Jason a few times about this, too, about the internet connection. We had the possibility to sync this with music as well, which is, I think, would be obviously a very, you know, cool thing. And again, this is not just a, you know, Christmas music-type thing, but, you know, we could sync it with Halloween music, obviously, or, you know, sync the National Anthem and stuff. Like, we could physically put an American flag on, there's a 20-foot tree in here. We can physically program an American flag waving on the 20-foot tree for Independence Day, Memorial Day, or Veterans Day and stuff. So, you know, again, this is what we look at as more of a year-round, year-round improvement for Prairie West Park. And again, not just for Christmas. You know, we would, the stuff that we have, too, we, you know, we'd still use whatever we can and make it to what would be our own. But this, you know, the RGB lighting, I definitely think is something that's, you know, you're going to start seeing a lot of this more and more. You're going to start seeing this a lot more and more in your own homes as, you know, as this goes along. And you see it now, obviously, and stuff like that. I had sent that link up out about those dancing pumpkins for Halloween and stuff, but, so.
If I, if I may, two things that I, or at least one thing that I'd like to point out. I mean, we're gonna have to purchase new lighting, no matter what, for this year. You're gonna have to purchase pieces here and there. We're gonna have to piecemeal this, whether this happens or not. The thing that I, I guess I'm looking at mostly when I'm looking at these quotes is yes, there is that initial upfront when you're looking at the Platinum and this, and this 10/23 quote. But if you look at that back end, next year's costs would be significantly less. And because this is something that we're not going to have to piecemeal again, year after year, where you're spending $15,000, $15,000, $15,000 for the next five years, you're doing it all in one fell swoop for the next five to 10 years.
Why does it say on like every, one of the, next year's cost would be $15,000 for labor to install and remove?
That's his, that was his estimate. It's not an exact, it's more of an estimate for next year, because he's not gonna...
Same, we will be paying $15,000 every year, though.
If we go with him, and if we go with somebody else installing the, if with just labor costs. If we go, if we go with somebody else doing just the labor costs, yeah.
There would be us not doing it.
Correct.
The town not doing it. The, and like a playground, you know, like I had mentioned, that, you know, I mean, you know, similar to like a playground and stuff like that, and one email and stuff like that. But there would be, there are some sort of maintenance with it, you know, just to keep everything working, having to keep up with, you know, if something goes out, having to replacing and stuff like that. Like, one example I'd given, like, I mentioned the 27 trees. They would be permanent. So that 27, on 27 trees in Prairie West Park, this lighting would be on the branches, around the tree trunks and stuff, right? But like, as the tree grows, you know, we would just have to...
Adjust.
Adjust it as needed and stuff like that. You know, and all of them, it does list that, that this would be X amount of dollars. And some of them, too, have items in there that are more freestanding items that, you know, we could, that's why Pat has sent out this other item list of just if we purchased it, you know, solo, and then we installed it, basically. So, yeah, I mean, those were, those were in there just as we had asked. I said, if we kept doing this, if you came back year to year, you know, what would it, you know, what would it be? And that's also trying to average it out with like, what would it be if we were doing it? Or, you know, Public Works and being involved in it, too, and stuff like that. And, you know, in doing it and stuff like that. So, because, you know, either way, we're, either we're paying it, you know, in-house with salaries and stuff like that, or not, you know, like, not avoiding and doing anything else, but not, you know, not being able to get to what your normal job responsibilities would be, you know, that's all, and stuff like that. So we don't have to necessarily, you know, do anything for the following year as well, you know. I mean, we would have the stuff. If we would purchase it, we would have it. And then, you know, I would say install what, more of the permanent lighting stuff that, you know, that would need to be, I would say, more professionally done because it involves the RGB, the lighting, the, you know...
Well, the installation specifically this year is for the five-year, I would say, warranty, more than anything else.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's this year. Years later, I mean, I guess, like he was saying, if I watch somebody do it one time, I'll figure it out.
And do I have this right that with the bronze, silver, and gold packages, that does not include any kind of RGB lighting, correct? That's just standard lighting?
Correct. So, yeah, if you look at the bronze and silver and gold specifically, those are what I would say are very much specific to just this event. It does update the lights. It gives us a great presentation for what we are going to have for the next five to 10 years. But it's just for Christmas in the park, yeah.
So while it may remain up, it's not really benefiting us at any other time of the year?
These ones are not permanent as well, correct?
They would have to come down.
Correct.
Yeah, that would be more of a Christmas.
So that's why that labor number on all them packages are that much more?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions while we've got them here? Because of the urgency of this issue, I would like to bring this to a vote tomorrow on how we would like to proceed. So if you guys could, over the next 24 hours or so, take a peek at all these possibilities and, you know, be able to submit your ideas or any other comments that we have. I think from looking at this latest package with some of the revisions on it, that it's only, you know, 15% more than the gold package, and we get the special lighting that we can leave up year long and save money, taking, putting up and taking down. So I think that's something to consider.
I will, I will make a note, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, David, that if you are looking at that 10/23, also take into what Mike was saying, that Santa's workshop, both of those items for the Santa's workshop and the Santa's workshop labor will not be included in that. So that's another 9.6...
Right. So I mean, when you, when you take that off and you look at the bottom line, then it's not that much more in what you're going to pay for, let's say, the gold and the put, setup and take-down costs, you're almost at that same number.
Correct. Yes.
As far as year-in, year-out maintenance.
Yes.
And then, of course, we have to store it, and we have to make sure we don't break it.
Correct.
We have to put it back up again.
Yeah, oh, yeah. We'll, we'll take very good care of it.
No matter which ones we go with, we're gonna take good care of this stuff.
Okay. So, Mike, you have any questions?
I think so.
No.
Jason, do you want to chime in on this? You kind of had a little bit to see with it. Is our internet connection there solid? Could we actually use it?
Oh, absolutely for this. It's mostly for remote control. It's not needed 24/7. It's just, you know, so if you wanted to control it from your phone, that's how you would do it. It was...
It would be like a giant video game for Rebecca and Patrick to play with? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, I mean, one of the...
It's a live video game.
One of the things that will, yeah, one of the things that will be nice, and we've actually been talking about this, and not for nothing, but we've been kind of scrambling because it has fallen into our laps. This allows us to lay a good blueprint for anybody who takes it over in the future. So that no matter what hands do have it, whether it be Mike and myself and Rebecca, look back with the Clerk Treasurers, or all of us combined, or a whole new regime coming in and taking it. This lays a good blueprint down so that it is a very smooth transition, no matter what.
Well, as I understand it from talking to Joe, there is a small budget available of funds, some of which were not allocated in our budget for '23 as far as the parks go. So we have some money available. I don't know that exact number, and maybe Joe will have to enlighten us that if he's here tomorrow. If not, we will just move forward. But I would like, because of the urgency and buying some of this stuff, if that's the direction we want to go, we kind of got to make that decision tomorrow. So you guys need to come here tomorrow with the idea that we're going to debate it, come up with ideas, and somehow, some way, figure out a solution so that we can move forward. Because we, we're in the one month to start.
I would say we're the 13th hour, not the 11th.
You know, time is of the essence.
Yes, very much so.
So, anything else you want to add?
No, I mean, if you guys have questions, please, you know, like Mike was saying, we've been getting numbers and ideas thrown at us for the last, you know, month, and have got a good idea and a good handle on this. So, yeah, if you guys have questions and further questions, please.
I like the permanent idea.
I do, too. No, and I, like, selfishly, from a recreation point of view, it does open up a world of ideas throughout the year of events that we can be doing throughout the park. And that's what, that's what does excite me. It's not just Christmas. It's, you know, the Freedom Fest, we can do stuff with some of these pieces. It's, you know, even these off events of Mother's Day, Father's Day, St. Patrick's Day. It does open up the door for a lot of capability, and that's, that excites me more than anything else.
All right. I got nothing else.
You like the Eye in Vegas.
Yeah. No, have you seen that? Oh, my God, that's wild. It's real, like, those kind of shows do, are really wild, and they're really cool to see. And that's what we are trying to be, to be billed and billed towards. I mean, it's pretty wild. It's fun.
Amazing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I've got nothing else. Anybody else have anything they want to speak on? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn.